All right, everybody. Hello, welcome back. It is 12:45, so I think we're gonna get a move on with our day. I think I saw Stephanie in the in the
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Yeah, I'm here somewhere in that.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. I do have a quick disclaimer for everybody. I have my nine-month-old German Shepherd servant dog in training with me in my office right now. So if there's some ruckus going on, it's a rambunctious nine-month-old German Shepherd puppy that I'm trying to entertain through this. So my apologies, but I just wanted to let everybody know.
Excellent. I think everybody deserves a picture then to see.
Yeah, I don't know. Let me see. Ponder. Come here, bud. Come here. Come here. Come here.
Ah, there he is. Excellent.
Not to be confused with mine, not to be confused with the background, but yeah.
Excellent. All is forgiven, all is forgiven any future.
This rain has been killing me in more ways than one with, you know, a rambunctious dog. So hopefully he'll settle down. Usually good for his neck.
All right, well, yeah, with the, so this is Stephanie Verdile with the Housing Appeals Board. I can let you, let you take it away for our Planning Board Housekeeping session.
Thank you very much. Sure, I'm gonna take control.
Perfect.
There we go. Okay, yeah, hi, hi, everyone. Thanks for joining us on the OPD Conference. Again, my name is Stephanie Verdile. I am current member of the Housing Appeals Board. And today I'm going to talk about planning board housekeeping. Some of the things that I'm going to review today are applicable laws that give you the authority to review applications, regulations, checklists, waivers, deadlines. Yes, 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 I'm all in favor of those. Going to talk briefly about the types of applications, application management, meaning the staff or the planning board. Motions, motions, people can get kind of bogged down in motions, so I'm just going to talk briefly about what to do with motions, to accept, to approve, to continue, site locks, third-party review, TRC, yes, yes, yes. Board decisions, I'm going to talk briefly about what makes them final or not, and some tips for board members at the end of the presentation. I will be able to take questions on point, you know, at a topic. If there is time at the end of my session, I'll certainly throw your questions in the chat. Brendan's going to be helping me out, kind of navigate that a little bit as well. If there's time at the end, I will be, I'll go try to get to those questions, but then also please keep in mind that the planner is in, which is right after this session, is when we can also have time for questions. So let me dive right in here. We're going to start off with a little quiz. For those of you who have taken this, the session before with me, should be, you know, should be very well aware of this. I'm going to throw off a couple of things here on the screen, so if you want to just throw your answers into the chat. Who out there knows what the RSA is for governing, creating a planning board? Throw them into the chat. If you have any, any idea. If you know anything, what about the election of officers? What's the RSA for the election of officers of the planning board? The RSA is for writing bylaws, rules of procedure. These are all these basic RSAs that are part of your governing body, part of what you should be following, what you need to have in place in order for zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, in order to have a zoning board of adjustment, and site plan regulations. So I will go through and answer those. So the RSA for creating a planning board is 673-1. The election of officers is 673-8. Creating bylaws or your rules of procedure, 676-1. You're required to adopt, to produce and adopt a master plan with two chapters, vision and land use chapter. Of course, we all know that. That's RSA 674, 1 through 4. In order to kind of branch off and do zoning ordinance, that article, that, excuse me, that RSA is 674, 16 through 20. The creation of a zoning board is 673-1-4. Subdivision regulations and site plan regulations are things that are really like the meat and potatoes for the planning board and what you're in charge of. Those governing RSAs are 674, 35 and 36, and 43 and 44. So those are, you know, all of the regulations that you're in charge of. Well, not all the regulations. You know, you're in charge of excavation and driveway and a whole bunch of other stuff. You really have a stack of regulations, local land use regulations that you have to learn when you take on this role. So to be aware of that, also just kind of make sure you're aware of what those RSAs are when you're working on your own regulations. So we're going to talk about subdivisions and site plans. Those are the two main things that the planning board is in charge of. So subdivision regulations, again, familiarize yourself with RSA 674, 36. Subdivision regulations must be consistent with the goals of the master plan, the other governing document that the planning board is in charge of, as well as the zoning ordinance. So planning board is in charge of amending on an annual basis. And it's also for, you know, determining the type of housing and where you want that housing according to zoning and for master plan. And may address also street layout, where the utilities are underground or overhead. Those types of things are all spelled out in your subdivision regulations. Subdivision regulations, they're also should itemize what makes a minor and a major subdivision. Whether you want a minor subdivision to be three lots or less, or five lots or less, or a major subdivision, all those things, that's your rulebook for determining, for reviewing and accepting and determining, approving or denying subdivision applications in front of you. So your rulebook should be very complete as far as what you're looking for, what your purpose is, what constitutes a major and a minor subdivision. And just like any other land use regulations from a variance from the zoning ordinance is kind of the relief valve that we need when we have regulations. The sister to that is for subdivision and site plan regulations that you must provide for waivers. Again, that's your regulatory safety valve that you need to have a process for within your regulations. So and subdivisions are, you know, based on, again, going back to the master plan, going back to your zoning ordinance. But also a subdivision in town is based on the premise that that subdivision should not be separate from the community, but it should be an integral part of the community and where, and where it efficiently connects to the community. So when we talk about, you know, if you've heard the term, you know, people throw it around loosely sometimes, or maybe a little too much. But when you talk about something that's scattered and premature development, that is a goal of your subdivision plans that's in order to prevent that. Because scattered and premature means that, you know, a development that's 15 miles out of town center or out of, you know, downtown is not efficiently connecting with the available municipal services. So when you're reviewing things like that, if something is too far, you know, away, there's no plan to have anything connected, all those types of things, that's what you're talking about scattered and premature. It makes it difficult for the municipality to provide services, whether that be school bus or trash, if you're fortunate to have that, or vehicular and emergency services, most importantly, emergency services, which is one of the basis, as we know, public health and safety are the basis for the, for the purpose of zoning and all of our regulations, should be the foremost. If it's too far away for an ambulance, fire truck, police truck to get there, some things like that can be considered scattered and premature development. So just as a practice pointer, I kind of wanted to put in here quickly before I forget. I always kind of put it at the beginning. But when you are working with your subdivision and for that, for that factor, site plan regulations, amendments to those regulations can be made throughout the year. You don't have to go to town meeting. That's the same with your excavation regs, your driveway regs, any other regulations that fall into the purview of the planning board for administering. It's different than the zoning ordinance, but your land use regulations underneath the planning board, you can amend those anytime through the year. So if you are getting into a situation where, you know, you think you may have to update your road standards or something like that, and you're working with, you know, an engineering, whatever the case may be, and you need to update those regulations, you can do that at any time of the year, which is actually, you know, pretty helpful for a planning board to get, you know, be able to keep up to date with regulations instead of waiting once a year for, for town meeting or for city council. So site plan regulations, just like subdivision, you know, make sure you're familiar with the RSAs that govern those, 674, 43. Just for like the subdivision regulations, the statutes also specify what site plan regulations must include. Again, you've got to include your procedure, your purpose, standards, definitions of what a minor and a major subdivision is, as well as, you know, having checklists, those types of things. And again, like subdivision regulations, you have to have a relief valve for waivers, and that needs to be spelled out in your regulations as well as in your application. Site plan regulations may include to address things like traffic, parking, landscaping, lighting, all of those types of things are, are items that can be included in your site plan regulations. But the main purpose of site plan regulations, just as with subdivision regulations, is to ensure that housing development, you know, is, you know, efficiently integrated into the, to the community. Site plan regulations' purpose are to ensure that the uses permitted by the zoning ordinance are constructed and operated in a way that they fit into the area where they're being constructed without causing undue noise, traffic, lights, similar problems, drainage, or runoff issues, those types of things. So they apply to commercial and industrial uses, multifamily developments, and whatever you define a multifamily on, whether that's more than two units, four units, five units, whatever your municipality defines what a multifamily is, multifamily applications are considered site plan, and they go to the planning board through the site plan regulations. Obviously, commercial uses, changes of use are also considered site plan. I like the subdivision regulations, site plan regulations should reflect the aspects of the master plan and the zoning ordinance, just like we said, you know, if you're going to have your zoning ordinance has zones for commercial, for industrial, you know, car wash is great in the commercial zone, not great in the rural zone. So your site plan regulations take that into account. They should be utilizing your other land use regulations, or if you remember any of my presentations you've been to before, the master plan is at the top of the food chain, and from that come your subdivision and site plan regulations. If you choose to have zoning, you have site plan regulations. But that's where the community has said, we want car washes in downtown, we want farms over here, this is what we want. So your land use regulations with the subdivision and the site plan being the most, you know, profound ones, they need to follow that within the master plan and your, your, within your master plan regulations. So try to keep that in mind when you're working on these applications. The, these regulations are a result of, you know, many ingredients in the planning wheel for what you're working on. If that kind of helps give you a little bit of some background or just a little bit more of an understanding of why do we have all these regulations? Why do we have so many? Why is the planning board in charge of all this? Hopefully this kind of, you know, helps you kind of understand that. So the plan, again, the number one role of the planning board is to accept and decide upon applications. The second most important role of the planning board is zoning amendments, and, you know, I talk, talk a little bit about that in a, in a bit. But the planning board application process, know your RSAs, 676-4. The application submitted to the planning board according to the board's meeting and deadline schedule, the RSAs, I believe, still say, the minimum of 21 days before a public hearing. What I used to do is, is I would post, which I, I think is very helpful to the planning board as well as to the public and to any potential applicants or developers coming to your municipality, is to prepare a meeting schedule for the whole year and post it on your website, keep it with all your board information available at the municipal offices. So that way that the board knows and the developers knows, the public knows when you're having those meetings, and it kind of helps with, with deadlines, and it helps kind of organize the chaos if your schedule is, is played out for everyone to see it. And work with your planning board chair on that if it's something that they're willing to do, you know, you think it's a good idea. I always thought it was very helpful for the board and for the applicants and the public to know when the planning board meetings are. So 676-4-1B, the board shall specify by regulation, again, going back to the RSAs that govern site plan and subdivision regulations. This, the planning board shall specify by regulation what constitutes a completed application sufficient to invoke jurisdiction to obtain approval. That's a lot of gobbledygook to say that the planning board, you have to have information in your regulations that lets the public, lets those applicants know what type of information that the planning board needs in order to have jurisdiction over an application, in order to make a decision on an application. So by, in, within your regulations. So that's, you know, kind of where the planning board gets to say, how you want your subdivisions, what do you want in your subdivision regulations, which translates into what do you want for an application to be submitted to you so that you have enough information to invoke that jurisdiction and to make a decision. So that's what we call a completed application. A completed application, again, means there's sufficient information is included to allow the board to proceed with consideration and to make an informed decision. So again, it's, it's these applications that come in front of you, as you know, for planning board members, that some of them are very easy, some of them are going to take you many, many, many meetings. And you need from the beginning to have that sufficient information from what you say in your regulations is what you need in order to make an informed, sound decision. And how to get to that informed, sound decision, you should be using checklists. Checklists, yes, like I say, you get to decide what's in your regulations and what you require for a completed application. That can be broken down into what you require for minor, what you require for major. You may not need a traffic study for a minor subdivision, but you may need a traffic study for a major subdivision. So all of that comes out in your regulations. So within your checklists, so they are itemized, checklist, itemizes what types of plans, studies, architectural designs, whatever type of information, any kind of materials, required fees, escrows, if you deal with engineering and third-party review, escrows, all of those that are required by your regulations. And that checklist is me as the developer says, yep, I have my architecturals, yep, I have this, all of those things. Because that's what the board has said, we need that information in order to make an informed decision. So the planning boards without staff to help with this kind of this checklist situation as far as when an application comes in, the secretary of the planning board can be the one to process those applications and review those checklists. So, you know, you can be the one that kind of determines what that required information is that comes across the counter by utilizing your checklist. It really kind of makes, you know, the deadline day and makes application submission much easier if you're going off of a checklist. Another option that you can use with checklists is that an applicant could choose to maybe come to you for a conceptual consultation. And that is just, you know, ideas on a cocktail napkin that can go in front of the planning board for 15 minutes or so. I used to limit it to like 15, 20 minutes because it is an informal conversation. And the planning board can take out their checklist and work with the applicant and say, if you want to come to us with a major subdivision, here's our checklist, these are the things that we'll be looking for within that application. So you can use checklists as a tool through the conceptual consultation process, which are, you know, again, very helpful for the board, very helpful for the applicant to know what's expected of each other and move forward with that and be able to help make an informed decision. It's also good for the, if you want to actually check out, sorry, the Planning Board Handbook on OPD's website, I believe they may have a template for checklists in there if you're interested, that you can certainly utilize those and cater them to, just to get a format thing going and cater them to your, for your own, for your own checklist. So after checklists, we have formal application. So the formal application, according to the RSAs, the planning board, again, shall specify by regulation what constitutes a completed application sufficient to invoke jurisdiction to obtain approval. That is your formal application. That's different than your conceptual, because now you're, the formal checklist is put in, the plans, the fees, all of that is put in. And again, so when something is, when we throw around the term, is the application complete? That means, does the application have all of the information you say by regulation is required? So that's why your checklists are very handy, helpful for the board, helpful for the staff to get through that, you know, kind of big process of what's, everything is required to be included. Checklists are part of the regulations. Again, you can adopt them as part of the regulations and as well as the application. And that's another kind of thing which is nice about being able to amend your regulations, which would include your checklist throughout the year, is if you find something that needs to be tweaked on your checklist can be done in the regulations, the planning board has the ability to do that when they find that that's necessary. So we have checklists, and then with checklist, which is all of the required information, along with that comes waivers. So application, and your RSAs, again, I'm going to keep driving this hole, make sure that you're familiar with the RSAs that govern you, and make sure that your regulations are in compliance with those RSAs, but waivers. So just like we said, that any land use regulation, like the zoning ordinance, needs that safety valve. Constitutionally, you need a safety valve from regulations. The zoning ordinance, it's variances, generally speaking. With the planning board regulations, they're waivers. So in order to ask for, for the planning board to grant a waiver, the applicants must show, and this again is written out in your regulations, that they must show good cause, that strict conformity to their, to the subdivision or site plan regulations would cause an unnecessary hardship. And in considering that, the waiver must not go against the spirit intent of the regulations. So it kind of maybe sounds a little like a variance, you know, but it's the same thing, just a little bit different, because the planning board's regulations, they have the ability to do the waivers thing instead of from the zoning ordinance. So waivers must be in writing. The applicant has to identify the section of what they're asking for and make sure that the planning board is, you know, can review that and go to that, take that application, go to their section of the regulations, review that, see what the applicant's justification for the waiver is. The applicant should not be handing you a piece of paper that says, I want a waiver from section 25, article 4. No, they need to put that in writing. They, they're trying to convince you to do, to grant them a waiver, so they need to ask why on paper so that the board can review that before the meeting. So don't allow applicants, you know, it's insufficient for them to just, you know, cite sections of the regulations and not give a justification. The board, so when the board is going to consider a waiver, make sure that you are being clear in why or why not that you're granting the waiver. So you're granting the waiver because, you know, the, of XYZ, you're granting that. Don't just say, yep, we grant the waiver. Nope, we don't. You've got to give that applicant direction. Whether you're not going to grant it, you're going to say why you're not going to grant it, and that could also be the basis for why you're not accepting an application as complete. So if I'm bringing a check, I'm submitting an application to you, I don't have any waivers, I submitted a complete checklist with everything, you have the ability to review that checklist. Yep, Stephanie has everything, you can vote to accept that as complete and continue on with the public hearing process. If I'm submitting waivers and, no, you know, I don't think I need a traffic study, whatever, and that goes to the planning board, and I'm asking for a traffic study, and the planning board really needs a traffic study to start working on this application, then they can deny that waiver, say to me, the applicant, Stephanie, we need a traffic study. We can either deny the application or we can continue the public hearing for, until you submit a traffic study. And that's part of the, the planning board's, this, this practice pointer here, this duty to assist. So in anything that you decide, you should be giving the applicant the information that, you know, giving them direction for the information that you need. So the New Hampshire Supreme Court has held that under the state constitution, municipalities have an obligation to provide assistance to all of their citizens seeking approval under zoning ordinances. And that it's their function to provide assistance to their citizens, which includes informing applicants not only whether their applications are substantially acceptable, but also whether they are technically in order. So all of that means in your process of accepting applications, of approving applications, of denying applications, of going through conceptual consultation with applicants, everything of the boards that you're in charge of, that you're, you're processing applications, you have a duty to assist, doesn't mean that you're in favor of an application. You just have to make sure that that developer, that applicant, that homeowner can go through the process well-informed. And that's very important to try to understand that as that can be held against a municipality if, if, you know, if you're being, if you're being sued or a decision is being questioned. So make sure that you do understand that. The Supreme Court has been very firm of this loosely called duty to assist.
Somebody had a quick clarification, if you don't mind. They, they said citizens, question mark, does that include businesses operating in a municipality with or without counsel?
Does that include businesses operating in?
There's a couple of questions.
Yeah, does that include businesses operating with or without counsel? I mean, for, I don't know, I mean, for approval, operating in municipalities with or without counsel? That, for the duty to assist, hang on, let me see, back to it here. So that's what the Supreme Court has said. Okay, it's not necessarily whether, it's not necessarily being with legal counsel or not. That what they're speaking of there is that a municipality, a board, the planning board, zoning board, whatever, that municipalities have a duty to provide assistance to all of their citizens. Okay? So you know, if you want to split hairs and say that someone who's out of state is not a citizen, I don't think you're going to get that far with that argument. However, it's, it's, the main point is that it's an obligation to assist people. You may not like an application. You know, you may not like, you know, a third Dunkin' Donuts in your town, but you have a duty to assist that person through your, the process and come up with your decision in a fair and reasonable way, as far as, you know, according to your reservations. So, you know, they're a citizen and out-of-state developer, you can check with your municipal attorney on that. I kind of don't want to get too far, you know, bogged down in that. It just was a duty to assist example as far as what the New Hampshire Supreme Court has said, that it is your responsibility to help these developers, these applicants, these homeowners through the process. And that comes with not just giving them incomplete answers. You know, we're not going to grant your waiver because, you know, we're going to deny this checklist item because, we're going to deny your application because. Those types of responses are not really appropriate for a duty to assist with applicants. So we can get more into that with Steve Buckley, you know, we'll, we'll be in the next session after that. I see there's a bunch that are, that are jumping up there, so we can ask for clarification on that. I just kind of wanted to make the point that the planning boards have to be clear with your decisions. So when you're considering waivers, there's a couple of questions that the board could, should be asking. And, you know, one of them is, will this affect the information that we need in order for us to decide on this application? Yes or no? Again, if this is a traffic study that you need for a major, you know, site plan application, I'm asking for a waiver, the board should be thinking, hey, you know, our regulations say we need a traffic study, and that's kind of a big item, you know, yes. If we don't have this information, it could affect how we make, make our decisions. And or is there enough information to make that informed decision based on your regulations? Again, that's the, the yes and no. Those are the, I've asked for permission to have a waiver, then the board has to turn around and say, well, we need it, we don't need it, which goes along for putting your decision in writing. And again, back to that, not just saying, no, we're not going to grant this. That's what we're talking about when a duty to assist. You've got to explain and, and make sure that your answers give the applicant direction, not just yes, no, because. If the waiver is granted, the application can be accepted as complete, and the public hearing can begin. You can do that at the same meeting as long as it's been noticed that way. I know there's municipalities, there's some places that they do the consideration at one meeting, and then they schedule for a public hearing after that. But if you've noticed it to, you know, if the, in your notice language, like if the application is accepted as complete, the public hearing will follow. You can do that and hold it at one meeting. If the waiver is not granted, the application can be denied. Or again, the kind of what I said, you can, you can work with the applicant and say, listen, Stephanie, we need that traffic study. So instead of denying your application, what we can do is we can continue it to another meeting, consider acceptance of it, consider the waivers and then give you time to submit that traffic study. So that's a way of assisting the applicant through the process. If the board sees fit, you can deny as well. And those are also types of things to work out with your town attorney is if, hey, you know, how can we do this? If the board thinks, hey, you know, maybe it was just a wetland stamp. Say you need a wetland stamp on a plan and, and all of a sudden it's discovered all this wetland stamp. This plan doesn't have a wetland stamp. Are you going to hold up acceptance for a wetland stamp? Or are you going to go through, accept the application as complete? Give the applicant a deadline, maybe even say, you're not even going to get conditional approval until we get these plans stamped. It can be something that, you know, maybe administrative or something as big, like a traffic study, where it's up to the board to decide whether or not you're going to deny and have them come back or, you know, continue it and have them submit the information. And one of the ways that we can get through, get through some of this checklist items and what may be considered for acceptance or not, or worthy of a waiver. One of my favorite things is the TRC. So that's a very helpful way for an applicant to go through the planning board process. You can do it, technical advisory committees. I usually just use the TRC for the technical review committee. So if you don't have a technical review committee, it's kind of, you know, you have to go back through the whole process. You know, if you have a planning board, we know the RSAs of how you get a planning board, you have to have all of these steps. Officers, bylaws, master plan, envision chapter, that type of chapter. 67435 has been granted to the planning board to review preliminarily, you know, subdivisions. So you need to have that. You can get TRCs with site plan approval authority or without site plan approval authority. But once that you've gotten the subdivision regulations approved and then you can, and you have a zoning ordinance, then you go to site plan. So you can have site plan regulations unless you have zoning ordinance. You can have a TRC that's non, you know, non, just as an advisory, just with subdivision regulations. But it's the, if you want site plan review, you need a zoning ordinance in order to have site plan review. If you want TRC to be in charge of minor site plans with, with review authority, then you need that. So the TRCs are kind of like the mini me of a planning board. You can have review authority or not have review authority. And how you do that is, it has to be an ordinance or a resolution that, again, that's voted on, that the planning board, once they receive the authority to review site plan, site plan applications, then they in turn delegate their site review powers to minor site plans for a committee of technically qualified administrators. So what is technically qualified administrators? So that when a TRC is, again, appointed by the legislative body, that warrant article will say with review authority or without review authority, however that's voted through there. And within that article, it will say who the members are with, with the authority. And that'll either be have site plan review authority or it can just be, again, just like as an advisory. And it'll highlight, you know, what members, what municipal departments and members from other, possibly of other boards make up the TRC. It's usually your main department heads, you know, DPW, police, fire, you know, sewer water, if it's available, building, planning, zoning, that type of thing. Sometimes a planning board member can sit on the TRC, they actually should. And maybe the conservation commission or other, you know, boards or commissions on town. There is a chair and a vice chair to the, to the TRC. And like I said, there, it's, it depends if you're going to have site plan review authority or not. It's how that initial warrant article was done. So it's perfectly fine to have a TRC that doesn't have site plan review authority, but they're still involved in the development process. So it is an arm, it is the mini me of, of the planning board. So if you do have, again, if you're, if you have TRC, if the community decided to do it as a, for site plan review authority, it's very beneficial as part of the development review process. And if you're going to have, and it's only for minor site plan, which also can be change of use, if that's what you, your community, you know, defines. It takes a lot of heat away from the planning board, it takes, it takes some of the workload off of the planning board, which can be very helpful. And it's a little bit, you know, less formal, so it's not as daunting as a task to go in front of the planning board and you're in, you're municipal department heads and other members of, of the TRC. So it is part of the development review process from the beginning. I used to integrate TRC as part of my planning board process. The TRC at the time was just advisory. But in my yearly, you know, schedule of planning board meetings, the TRC would be in there. And so that that TRC would be before the planning board meeting. It was still informal, but the department heads, you know, all attended, they were involved in the process. And it really is helpful for the applicants and the, and the board, the planning board and the department heads to know what applications are coming forward and to say, hey, make sure you've got enough of a radius for my fire truck to get through there. All of those types of nuances are very helpful for the planning board, very helpful for the town departments and for the applicant. Part of what, knowing what's, what goes into an application so that the planning board can make a, a good decision on it. It creates communication, not only is it help the applicant through the process and helps the planning board and the department heads. You know, it's that communication and cooperation. We're all on the same team, municipal teams, we all should all be cooperating and, and learning from each other. And what the board could be looking for and asking for from future applications, they may be learning from a TRC. So it's, it's very, it's a very, very beneficial process. It's, it's a bit to get it together, but once it's together and it's up and running, it's, it's very, it's very beneficial.
There's a, there's a couple, couple of quick questions about TRCs in, in the chat if you wanted to take a quick, it's just the last two comments, if you want to take a quick look.
Okay, let's see. In a municipality that has staff, can assure the TRC be just a referral to the department? And it becomes, I mean, yeah, I guess it could. In a municipality that has staff, can assure the TRC be just a referral to the department for comment? And the comment then becomes public record? Oh, well, I mean, I guess you could, but it really is helpful to have everybody kind of comment on it at once. It kind of helps, kind of, you know, herd the cats together. But certainly if, if a department or someone can't make it, then yeah, you can, they can refer it to the department. If it's something that they say, why don't you come sit down, talk to the fire chief about that? Yes, they can, they can take that off to the side. TRCs are at public meetings, yes. When you have site plan review authority and that is a public hearing, because they are a mini arm of the planning board. They've been given a site plan review authority over minor site plans and/or changes of use. So that is a public hearing where they're taking formal input on applications. I'll talk a little bit about meetings and hearings later. But a, a public meeting is just TRC without, because they're just giving advice. They're an informal TRC without review authority, is not approving anything. They're giving advice, giving input for the applicant to move forward with. It's a good way for streamlining the development process and saving everyone time and money. And everybody, getting everybody on the same page, so that all the departments are aware of what's going on. The planning board is aware that this applicant has been in front of the departments and knows, okay, you, you talked about this at TRC, you're going to meet with the fire chief offsite to do that or, you know, you know, at a different time to do that. But it just makes sure that, that all the departments are being involved. I'm playing answer that. Oh, I can answer, let's see. If a waiver is not granted, is the public hearing postponed? It can or it can't be? Like you can either, if a waiver is not granted, you can deny or you could continue the application and make, continue acceptance, consideration of acceptance of that application to a specific date and time. And again, that goes along with working with the applicant or, or at least giving them direction. That's, that's most importantly. If you're not going to accept the waiver and you're going to deny the application in your notice of decision and your findings of fact, you need to be clear why you denied and what that applicant would need for, you know, consideration of approval. And if you've, if you've gone through with that and continue, it's the same thing. You can continue that application or move ahead with it and say, listen, we're not going to, you know, give you final approval until you get us that wetland stamp. We'll continue this application. So depending on how, you know, how intense that, that request is, the board can, can go from there. So types of applications, again, this major and minor. Your, your regulations should define what a major and minor subdivision is. That can be based on the number of lots, square footage of a building. Change of use could be, you know, again, is usually a minor. And they should also identify whether or not a third party review would be required for that. Or if that could be like individual at the board's discretion. But you should have third party review listed in your regulations for your, for your own benefit. So if there is an established TRC that has the site plan review authority, again, it's the mini me of the planning board. So if they have site plan review authority for minor site plans, then they need their own regulations. And that's, again, they have public hearings, because they are making a decision on a formal application. So they have, TRC will have their mini version, the same thing, only different from the planning board site plan regulations. It would just be geared for minor site plan regulations. So again, the TRC with review authority is kind of, it's, it's a lot more to get it started and keep it straight and get it going. But both versions of TRC are very helpful for application processes and for the workload for the boards. So when applications come in, you make sure that you, you can either have the planning board secretary be the one that's in charge of taking those applications in across the counter, or if it's staff or part-time staff. But make sure that you set up a process for, you know, applications in the office. Again, going to that schedule on May 15th is application deadline. Don't, I highly recommend that you don't do the, the 4:30 drop off, the 4:29 drop off. Stick to your deadlines. I used to do the noon deadline and I worked with my planning board chair, kind of told them what works best. A noon deadline worked really well. I could see all the applications come in or deadline day, there's no applications that came in. But that way, you've got the rest of the afternoon to kind of go through the applications, take lunch, come back, see what you have in front of you, give the, the first initial review of those applications as far as make sure that they're ready to move forward towards, towards the planning board. For deadline day, you should create a spreadsheet that helps track, or create a spreadsheet that you can use on deadline day that helps track your applications with escrow accounts on where they are. It's helpful for the board's year end reports or your town reports or municipal reports, how many subdivisions you worked on. It's just kind of a fast way to, to see what applications that the boards have been working on. I would consider creating a cover sheet for all the applications. Again, it's very helpful to, to kind of just have that quick glance, especially if you're in a timeframe where you've got a lot of applications, maybe one meeting, you get six or seven in. And as those applications go through the process, on the next deadline, you're getting more applications in. It's a quick and easy way to keep track of your applications, what you're waiting for from the applicant. To do that with cover sheets for your applications. A butter verification is the applicant's responsibility. And they get that information from the town records, but town staff shouldn't really be taking the time to tell the applicant, yes, these are your butters. If there's a question over in a butter, whether or not they're, well, they're kind of down the street or, you know, I would always kind of recommend it's, it's better to overnotice than to, than to undernotice or, or just make it at the bare minimum. Because, you know, somebody that's just right down the street or one lot away, they can also kind of maybe be involved and could be granted standing for, for an application. So it's better, it's always just kind of better, pound wise, penny foolish kind of thing to, to make sure that you overnotice. But that's not your responsibility as town staff to tell them who their butters are, but you can certainly help them through the process with that. I had in a butter submission policy and I learned the hard way, the first time that I took in a telecommunication ordinance, excuse me, telecommunication tower application, when there was a lot of butters. So I came up with, you know, trying to find that one number that's reasonable, working with my planning board chair. And I used to use 10. So if an application had 10 or less of butters, I would prepare the mailing information and things like that. If the application had 11 or more, 10 or more, 11 or more, then it was the applicant's responsibility. Now I know there's changes in the laws about how you can do some noticing. But if you're still kind of really old school and you're still using certified or your municipal, it's still in your regulations to do it that way. You know, it's, it's, it's a burdensome task for staff. And even if the planning board secretary is the one that's, that's doing this kind of thing of taking in, working with applicants for submission and being responsible for that. It, it takes a lot of time to do labels and things. So it, work with your staff, work with your planning board chair to see if it's something that you could have into your regulations and your application requirements. And also you don't have to make copies for applications and materials for the applicants. Again, that's what your regulations are for, that's what your checklist is for. Maybe if somebody, oh, can, you know, can you make a copy for one sheet? No, but yes, you can. But, you know, if your regulations say, submit 10 applications to me on deadline day and the applicant shows up and they have, you know, one original and they want you to make copies, like, you know, don't, don't allow them to do that. That's a lot of resources on you. And it's their responsibility to submit the information from the checklist. So when you are... Yeah, I see that. The butter law recently changed as far as for who one of butter is. Yeah, there may be another one that's up and coming. So again, then good way to know your regulations and to know what a butter is, to make sure that you're aware of your, of the RSAs that change that you have to comply with. So when it's deadline day, applications that come in across the counter, the person in charge of that, whether it's staff or the board, the planning board secretary, you're only reviewing the application, the materials just for content, it's not for, for substance requirement. So again, you're looking at that checklist, you're seeing if fees are there, if plans are there, if the owner notification is there. That's what, is what your responsibility is for doing that on, on, on application day. You inform the chair of the number of applicants, applications that came in, process your fees, whether it's escrow, just the application fees. You can start creating a public notice, again, just getting all sorts of organized so that, you know, it's there, it's fresh. You make sure that you're meeting your RSAs requirements for notification. Make sure that you are, have enough time to circulate your packets to the planning board and to TRC if you have it. Planning board should, you know, as best you can, so that, we all know, planning board members do their homework, do their homework. Excuse me. The planning board should, you know, make a kind of a goal, at least a week or at least four or five days for them to have their packets in front of them for their homework purposes. And TRC probably the same, or maybe it's a little bit easier with, with the department heads. But you make sure you're just giving enough leeway for your TRC to get that packet in advance of the meeting so that they can do their homework. So roles and responsibilities. So once you get that application in, it's your, it's one of your things. The main things that you do is you review and decide upon applications. And so part of the role of, of the board members for that, specifically the chair, you know, he is responsible to, to kind of run the meeting, you know, make sure that the applicant has a chance to make their presentation. Butters in the public also have, have an opportunity and have the right and a chance to be heard. The chair does not have to allow for repetitive comments, especially if it's, it's a big application and, and you know, there's a lot of people that are going to be in attendance. You can limit it with time limit, you can have time limits and you don't have to allow these, the repetitive comments over and over and over again. You can kind of set the parameters at the beginning of the meeting and just let people know. You're always will accept comments in writing, that will be part of the permanent record. I've seen people where like they'll say, yes, I agree with so and so, so that, that's not a repetitive comment. They still had a chance to speak, they were recognized. I've had applications where a lot of people after that first meeting have, knew that they could submit comments in writing and were appreciative of that. And then were submitting comments in writing, which become part of the permanent record for that application. So the chair can set guidelines and make time limits and, and restrict kind of the content thing and the essence of time. And if you want to, you know, work with your town attorney on... And if you want to, you know, work with your town attorney on, on procedures for that, maybe even throw it in your rules of procedure or throw it into your regulations, it's kind of good backup to have in case you need it. Hopefully you never have to use it for something that's there for those types of applications, but it's there if you need it. It's also your responsibility or part of your role is to, you know, again, working with the applicant, duty to assist people. You still can have the opportunity to continue something. That don't, it doesn't mean that you have to like every application that comes in front of you. You don't have to approve every application that comes in front of you, but you have to be fair. And you can continue something if you're in doubt to talk to your town attorney and explain that to the applicant. Even if it's for, you know, it may be even just a minor question. When in doubt, don't, and explain to the applicant, we're going to talk to our town attorney, we'll continue this to such and such a date, working with the applicant. It, it, especially when it comes to completeness, or if you're going to, some granting a waiver, if there's something kind of technical and you're unsure, well, what happens if we do this? What does this mean? You're, you're fine to talk to your town attorney before making a final decision. Make sure, you know, the food chain with the master plan on the top and everything comes from that. You should be thinking and taking into consideration all of the land use regulations when you're determining on applications. You know, zoning ordinance, the, the master plan, all those types of things, because that's where your regulations come from. That's how the town wanted to see its, its growth and development. So you should be taking those regulations into consideration when you're doing, when you're reviewing applications. And again, just, you know, can't stress more, when in doubt of something, if you're concerned about something, if you're uncertain, if you've got conflicting information, whatever the case may be. Don't let an applicant strong arm you just to, to get an answer. You are the planning board and you're, you're, you have the right to also take a time out and get, get advice from your town attorney. So don't ever be afraid to do that either. And so planning boards have two kinds of meetings, right? They have public hearings and they have public meetings. And I used to tell my board, sometimes you've got to be really kind of specific when you're talking about, you know, oh, they had a public meeting last night. Oh yeah, the public hearing. You gotta sometimes be very specific and it's easy to kind of lump those two terms and under onto one. But it's important because of the planning board's role in each of those types of meetings. So a public hearing is a meeting that is duly announced and advertised in advance that is open to the public and called by the town council board, planning board for the purpose of taking formal public comment, both in favor and opposition to a proposed action. So that absolutely describes a planning board meeting. So a planning board meeting with applications is a public hearing. That's that duly announced and advertised 10 day in advance to the butters posted in public. It's open to the public, called on by the planning board, taking a formal public comment, both in favor and opposition to a proposed action. So the public hearing says, you know, Jane Doe is going to open a Dunkin' Donuts located at such and such in downtown, street address. We will be considering this application, such and such date, time, location. That's a public hearing because it's formal comment. A public meeting is an informal meeting, hearing. It's a workshop of, you know, planning boards can have workshops, you know, work on zoning amendments. It could be, you know, a master plan subcommittee, it could be a CIP, it could be something like that where, yes, they're making decisions, but it's, there's nothing formal about that. They're making decisions, okay, we're going to work on such and such of the zoning ordinance, that can be done in a work session. That's a public meeting. But throw another type of meeting. There's one question, what about roles of planning boards that don't have master plans? You can't have a planning board without a master plan. You can't have a master plan without, what roles of planning boards that don't have master plans? You, you need to have master plan. Maybe we can get some clarification on that at the, at the Q and A, but. If you don't have a master plan, then yeah, then what is the roles of, of planning boards? Because you need to have the master plan to have subdivision and everything else. So we can maybe talk about that at the Q and A if you want to bring that up. Site walks are another form of meeting. They're an important part of the application decision making process. I know that I'm a very visual person when it comes to, oh yeah, the development out on such and such street. Well, I drive by, it's very helpful to get, you know, that where this proposal fits into the neighborhood, what surrounds that neighborhood. So if you have, if you're not used to doing site walks, you know, they are a pretty good tool for the, the development process. You should be doing it in the beginning, or sometimes you can also accept as complete. The board has a lot of questions. You can also, after you do that, you can schedule a site walk after you accept it as complete. It's a public meeting, not a public hearing. It's a public meeting, so you need to post an agenda and you need to have minutes. And minutes of a site walk meeting need to be more than planning board showed up, applicant was there, discussed application, meeting adjourned. Okay, that, that's not really sufficient for minutes. A site walk is very important because a lot of questions could come up from site plan, excuse me, from the site walks. So your minutes should really reflect that. It's very important for the record and for the applicant and for the public to know like what happened on the site walk. Instead of just everybody showed up, talked about the site and then we adjourned. So make sure that who's ever taking the, the planning board minutes for that is, is really kind of making sure you're getting the content to help the board and the applicant. The public must be allowed to attend. If you deny the public access to the, the site walk, you can delay the application and it could also possibly be grounds for denial. Again, good, it's good fact finding, so make sure that those minutes are, are complete and it gives a good visualization of the area. If it comes down to it where the developer, the applicant, the homeowner and the planning board just can't get their schedules together. If you can't do a formal site walk, you know, the, the planning board may say, okay, we'll do a drive by. And so just kind of, you can very easily drive to the site on yourself, get out, just kind of look around a little bit. You shouldn't really like, you know, go with anybody else. But again, it just, if it's a quick drive by, just kind of help you in that process of getting a visualization of, of the property and the application.
Somebody asked really quick, may, can there be more than one site walk conducted?
Absolutely, absolutely. I have been on site walks and, and recommended site walks because it is a good example for either a site plan or a subdivision development. If there's a road going in and maybe the road isn't staked out yet. You just want to go to the site and then the planning board come back and like, well, yeah, I kind of want to see where that road is going to go. And how does that interfere, how does that work with this intersection kind of thing? So yeah, absolutely, you can do more than one site walk. I'm, I'm a big fan of site walks, I think they should be, you know, as, as part of all applications. Okay, so another thing for the planning board, it's, it's part of your responsibilities is to work with, excuse me, work on getting or utilizing, I should say, the third party review. If you're not familiar with RSA 6764B should be. I, I think it should be part of every application process. It's the RSA is designed to assist the municipalities in hiring experts to help you understand, you know, material, designs, drawings, drainage studies, traffic studies that you don't have any experience with. It's, it's can be very helpful for, you know, big applications, unusual subject matter, you know, hey, we've never had, you know, a gas station in town. So you're going to go out and get that expert and maybe it's fire department or, you know, fire marshal's office or a specific engineer that's going to help you with this gas station application process. Just like I, you know, wouldn't want any planning board to feel strong armed by an applicant that says, you know, hurry up and approve me, hurry up and accept me. Don't take the applicant's word when it comes to anything that's very technical and engineering, traffic, drainage, noise, lighting, anything like that. That's like the fox guard in the hen house, okay? You have the, the ability, the, the power, the right to ask for a third party review. And it's for the municipality's own protection. Yes, it will take more time, but you are getting, you know, much better information on, on what the applicant is looking for or how this plays a part of that, of that application, a drainage study, a traffic study, a noise study. Again, going back to helping you make an informed decision. The, it's no cost to the municipality. Developers are very, very well aware of this RSA, they know that they have to pay for it. So it's, does not cost the municipality anything and it's for your own interest and protections. You know, the horror story that I am aware of is a subdivision for the municipality that did not require third party review for the road design. And this neighborhood now has, you know, like drainage problems all the time. Because they didn't, excuse me, they did not require a third party review to make sure that it was with the road standards and that proper, you know, ditching was there and all the, all the ingredients that make up what road design and drainage and runoff should be. So make sure that you guys are aware of 6764B. If it's something, it may, it may be you're not interested in having 670, using the third party review. I think it's very important, it's for the town's protection. And it's a, it's a good way to get that expert advice on technical applications. You could put third party review, you know, the fees and what applications that it applies to in your regulations, in your application. We used to have, you know, a $500 fee for a minor subdivision site plan, or it was 250, I think, and then 500 for major. So what that did was it was part of the application fees, they knew right away, it was in the regulations, we have third party review. That engineer gives a preliminary review, which is helpful at TRC. Sometimes the engineer would go to TRC as well if it was a big project or it was uncertain, you know, an unusual project. And then that gets that $500 as the engineer's fee to start that preliminary review, provide a letter to the planning board, sometimes attend planning board meeting. So it really is part of the, of the review process. It's very helpful for the board and work with your municipal attorney if you be interested in working on things like that. So and what is their role besides, you know, you know, having a bill and working on engineering stuff? They're, they're really behind the scenes working with the applicant because that, that review engineer or that expert has the town's regulations. They have the application in front of them, they work with the applicant's engineer on how that application meets the town's regulations. And how, you know, but if they're designing a road at 15% and the most of the town does is 10, well, that engineer can work with that applicant engineer to come up with the plan that meets the regulations. Again, it's to work to protect the municipality's interest. It can also contribute to a reason to approve or deny an application. As far as, you know, we're going to deny this application because our engineer says that a fire truck is not going to make that radius. So, you know, you can go from there because you have that expertise. You can also utilize a third party review throughout the whole project development. Some of the bigger applications and some of the bigger construction, it, it's worth it that that applicant, again, he's paid for by the applicant. Developers are very well aware of this. If you've got a brand new road going in, it would be very beneficial for the town to have an engineer to go out and do the inspections and make sure that the ditches are incorrectly and all of that stuff that goes along with it. Instead of just letting the developer go out there and not be supervised or babysat. That's the, part of the importance of the third party engineer. They're very important in the paperwork administrative part for helping the board understand and make a good decision. From understanding and making a good decision comes good conditions of approval. And you also need that third party engineer to be out there on the face of the earth, making sure that the road is done to road standards and they do have their drainage in. All of it paid by the developer and the town is protected for, for any type of mishap that may go on. So when you're getting to the point where you're going to make motions for your decisions. Motions can be made by any regular member, the chair can make a motion. An alternate who is serving in place of a regular member can also make a motion. Motion should contain the complete action of what, what the board wants to do. They should include conditions of approval, reasons for denial. There's motions require a second to discuss and they must be, it must be deliberated and then require a formal vote. Now, a failed motion is, does not mean that the action is to approve the opposite. So if the motion to approve fails, it does not mean the application is denied. If a failed motion to deny, doesn't mean that the application is approved. You, you work, the board works through whatever the motion would be in order to get that decision in favor or for or against. So a new motion must be made and seconded in order to move this along. Discussion will continue until the board can work to decree, excuse me, until they can agree upon a decision. So I know it's kind of tricky and sometimes it's, it's, it's kind of hard to like, well, just because you have to have a vote to deny the application for an application to be denied. Because you had a, a motion to approve that fails, that doesn't mean that that's denied. And a failed motion to deny doesn't mean that that application is approved. So when you're beginning to make your decision and you get to, you've gone through your site walks, you've got everything. You're, you're looking at your conditions of approval or for your reasons for denial. You can do that still, you know, before you close the public hearing, if the board sees fit, it may be beneficial. If questions came up that, you know, the board may give the applicant one more time to answer questions, whether it's from the board or whether it was from the public. So that's something that you can consider doing, like let everyone know anything else before we go into deliberations. And then if there's no other comment, then you close the public hearing. Closing the public hearing means that there should be no more input from the applicant or from the butters. That is for the board to start deliberating and they do it in public in front of everyone. Unless there's an extenuating circumstance where, again, the board has a question and, and the, the applicant is right there. Maybe they can open, reopen, close to get that. But usually the board deliberations are for them to make the decision and, and they should be, you know, it should be not interrupted by them. They can have discussion with other third party professionals if they're there and with staff as well to help the board through conditions of approval. But if you're going to go through with condition, you know, when you get to the part of conditions of approval, you know, the most important thing to do is be clear with your reasons why for approval or denial and all of that comes through deliberations. When you're getting to the conditions of approval part, don't, try not to be concerned with how many conditions of approval or, or denial. You know, if you're denying something for so many reasons, don't get, you know, bogged down. If an application needs 26 conditions of approval in order for you as the planning board to ensure that this was a sound development and this is what the applicant submitted, excuse me, then, then that's what it takes. You can't, you can't enforce intent. And if an applicant says in a meeting, oh yeah, I'll plant 20 maple trees and you don't make that as a condition of approval. And, you know, a year later, when the app, when the, you know, the, the development is done and a planning board member is driving by and says, well, hey, how come there isn't 20 maple trees there? Because they only said it at a meeting, you didn't include it in your conditions of approval. And it's exceedingly difficult, if not impossible, to go back and have something that they said at a meeting. So minutes also don't count for enforcement, just because you said something in the minutes, that, that doesn't mean, you've got to be clear. And you, and if you want 20 maple trees planted there by the spring of 2028, then make sure it's a condition of approval and that you follow up on that. Consult with your town attorney or your municipal attorney, excuse me, as far as how you can work through conditions of approval. You can make templates for some of your standard conditions of approval to kind of help you navigate through that and so you don't forget anything. But it's, you know, it's important to make sure that you're working with your town attorney when it comes to some of these conditions of approval and what can be, you know, enforced and what can't be. I will stress a lot that please make sure that you are complying with 91A as far as getting your minutes and decisions done. 91A3 says minutes shall be properly recorded, open to the public, not more than five business days after the meeting. So that's something that has to be taken very seriously. And applications can be turned upside down if it's found out that minutes weren't completed within five days. Same thing is true now, as we all know about the findings of fact, which are different from your notice of decision. So make sure that you are having findings of fact, again, going back to. Again, going back to, you can't just answer something and say, yes, we like it, no, we don't because we're denying this because it doesn't meet our regulations. That, those aren't, you know, sufficient enough answers for giving the direct, giving direction to the applicant. So if you have not figured out a, you know, a real concise way or to do your findings of fact, then please work with your town attorney on what should be included in your findings of fact. Uh, conditional approval. It gets into what conditions precedent and conditions subsequent. So a conditional approval under your planning board RSA is only the interim step in the process of the board's consideration and it is not a final approval. It's, it's in the name in and of itself. It's a conditional approval. That means that for the approval to be final, there are no unfulfilled conditions precedent. Conditions precedent are the conditions that must be completed and submitted to the board if necessary to obtain the final approval. So I've got my conditional approval for my Dunkin' Donuts. That doesn't mean that I could go run out right away and get a building permit unless I have final documents, unless I revise my plans, unless I do whatever those conditions of approval say. So it's not a final approval. When the conditions precedent have been met, then the final approval can be granted and plan signed, all of that in, bills paid, plan signed. If it needs to be recorded, it's recorded, then they can move forward with the building permit. That is what's considered the final approval. A board can include conditions subsequent. Again, kind of that thing, if you want 20 maple trees planted, make sure that you say that in your conditions of approval because that's something that's going to go on for the life of the project. So if you say, hey, all parking lot lights have to be off by 10:00 PM every night, if that's a condition of approval, that's a condition subsequent because that's ongoing with the project. So if you're going to do conditions subsequent and, and precedent and, and itemize them that way, it's helpful for enforcement. And it's helpful for to let the applicant know what's needed before them to get final approval and then what's part of the ongoing conditions of approval for the application. So again, if the board wants final approval based on the applicant completing certain condition precedents, then they need to be clear with that. Again, just getting back to working with your system, getting used to these, that, you know, your, the process for conditional approvals. If you want the final approval based on the applicant completing certain conditions precedent, you know, give us a copy of your DES permit. We need the driveway permit. It, make sure that you paid your engineering bills. If you want all of that, you need to be clear. And noting to the applicant, failure to comply with all of that means that there is no final approval. So that you, you can be very clear with that. And not, that also prevents these applications from just kind of being in limbo, like after they've been approved and they just kind of sit there and like, well, what's going on? Did they get their permit yet? Did they get this yet? So it helps you kind of keep track, that application tracking sheet that you've already made up from the beginning. Right on there, they were approved such-and-such, waiting on DES permit, waiting for them to pay the bill. All those things help you keep track of your applications, keep track of the applicants. And so the, the board knows what's going on with the applications. Using templates is very helpful. I've talked about templates a little bit before. When in doubt, don't, again, with your municipal attorney, consult with them. What can we do for conditions of approval? What can we do for conditions precedent? What can we put in a template to make sure that every application has the same thing? So we're not missing anything. So all of those things are, are important to work with your town attorney. So that is the first role of the planning board is to review applications. Second big role of the planning board is zoning amendments. So the planning board, as you know, is responsible for zoning amendments. And the majority of the zoning amendments do usually come from the planning board. A zoning amendment is any change to the zoning ordinance, including language, table, graphics, or maps approved by the legislative body. 675-6 is your method of adoption. Every local master plan, subdivision regulations, site plan review regulation, historic, all your land use regulations shall be adopted or amended by the planning board or historic district commission. And, and it is included and inferred that it does include zoning ordinances. So who is able to present amendments? The planning board under 674-1, the governing body. The governing body, the village district commission, the selectmen, town councils, city councils. They all have the, the right and the authority to propose zoning amendments. Types of zoning amendments? A petition zoning amendment, RSA 675-4, is 25 or more registered voters may petition amendment to a zoning ordinance, historic ordinance, or a building code. For a petition zoning amendment, make sure that you have the correct format for a zoning amendment. Each town clerk or each municipal clerk will have their own format for how zoning amendments are presented on the ballot. So make sure that you're zoning, they're not going to take a zoning amendment written on a cocktail napkin. So make sure that you've got that format down. It's helpful for the voter. It's helpful for the public to understand what's being asked if it's all in the same format. Petition zoning amendment has to go to the, in front of the planning board at least once. And it has to have a statement of planning board support or not with, on that warrant article, whether the planning board supports it or not. Some planning boards just do, planning board supports or not. Some planning boards do, the planning board supports it and you, based on the vote. You know, the vote was, you know, seven to one that they support this. But that needs to be included on the zoning amendment language. Yeah, for a petition zoning amendment, you should have, or for any zoning amendment that, for that reason, but you should have the reason or the justification or a brief explanation of the statement along with that. It should be on the ballot. Why are you changing the zoning from, you know, a building can be 80 feet high to why are you changing it to 60 feet high? So you have the planning board or petition amendment should have that, just a brief explanation there of why you're changing the zoning to limit the building strike. Doesn't have to be huge. Town clerk or municipal clerk, probably doesn't want a lot of language on the ballot, but it's the better interest of the public to have at least a one or two liner as to why they're, why they're voting on that, why they should vote on that with an explanation. Understand that a governing body zoning amendment and a petition zoning amendment language cannot be changed, but that's why it's important to be in the same format. But if the gov, if the governing body wants the petitioned amendment to change that building height from 80 feet to 60 feet, the planning board cannot change that language. They can support it or they cannot support it, but they can't change the language of a petition zoning amendment. It is very helpful on whatever town form of voting that you have or municipal form of voting that you have, to have a planning board member or planning board staff there at the day of, of the elections for the voting on those amendments so that you can talk to people and if people have questions about the zoning amendments before they vote, it's helpful to have them there. So that's the two big rules that the planning board has is reviewing applications and zoning amendments, which are very, very, very time-consuming, as you know. Just doing zoning amendments and just working on applications kind of takes up your whole year. But those are two of the things that are, are very important for your community and that, that's what you're in charge of, in addition to driveway and excavation and, and other things. And so being a board member, you stepped up for your community, whether you've been elected or appointed. But some tips for being a good board member is, is really do your homework. Okay, a lot of people went through a lot to prepare you for these meetings. And the, the least that you can do is your homework and, and review and read, at least try to understand what's coming in front of you. You don't have to have, you know, huge reports done or anything like that. But it's, it's your job to review applications and review and decide upon applications. So do your homework. Be fair and unbiased. You, you, you don't have to approve every application that comes in front of you. You don't have to like every application that comes in front of you. But if an application comes in front of you and it meets the regulations, it, you know, and it meets everything and dots all the i's and engineers worked on it, it doesn't mean that you have to like the application, but you do have to kind of, you know, be fair and, and unbiased. You should make sure you're attending the meetings, work with staff on learning the ordinances. There are a lot of ordinances, master plan, subdivision, site plan, but make sure that you're learning those ordinances. Understand what applications that you're responsible for. Okay, I used to see a lot of times that people used to interchange special use permit or special exception and ZBA was trying to go outside their lane and attach, you know, traffic stuff to a variance, all kinds of gobbledygook running around. Know your lane, stay in your lane. And that way that you can focus on, you know, the application in front of you and how your guidelines and your regulations, how that application meets those applications. Make sure that you're cooperating with other boards. You know, again, we're all on the same team. We all have different roles, planning board, conservation, historic, ZBA. You can cooperate and, and just make sure that you're working with, with, working with each other. It's especially important at zoning amendment time for the planning board and the zoning board to kind of talk and communicate. If the ZBA is seeing a ton of variances or a ton of special exceptions, that's a red flag. That's, you know, that, hey, planning board, can you take a look at this section of the ordinance? We're getting a lot of applications on that. That's something that the planning board and the zoning board should be working together with, each other.
I just wanted to cut in really quick and just let you know where we are running a little over on time. So you're, you're, you're right on the last, the last slide, so I didn't want to.
Exactly, just be a good board member. We can talk a little bit more with, with, at the Q and A. Refrain from social media, work with your town attorney, don't communicate via email. And my favorite quote I have in my office and I've had in every one of my municipal offices is make sure that you're exposing yourself to trainings like this. Reach out to NHMA when you can and OPD. And always remember the famous Albert Einstein, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we used when we created them." And as board members, that's, that's part of your job is to, is to, you know, not create problems, but solve problems. So these are the resources, again, that you can reach out to. APA, New Hampshire Association of Planning Commissions, NHMA, OPD are all resources that you're, for your, for you to utilize. And that's, apologize for going over and thank you very much. And we'll see you in the Q and A.
Yeah, excellent, excellent. Well, thank you so much. That was, that was excellent. I've, I've got a few questions that'll kind of bleed over into the next session just for, for all the folks who, you know, put, put questions in the chat. And, and again, I mentioned in, in the, in the chat that, you know, we are going to be posting this on YouTube. So if, if you can't stick around for the next section or, or, you know, you want to go back to a section, you know, you really liked what Laura said about something earlier in an earlier session, you can revisit all, all of those things. So I just wanted to give, give you all a heads up about that as well. So anyway, yeah, with that, let's, let's, I'm going to take back control really quick. And yeah, we'll take a quick 10-minute break and we'll be back at 2:15.
Thanks, we'll see you guys in the Q and A.
See you soon.